Six o'clock, ready to begin. Welcome everyone to the regular Delray Oaks Planning Commission meeting. This is Wednesday, May 12th. We will convene now at 6:00 PM. Karen, if you would, perform a roll call.
Commissioner Berger.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Hayworth.
Here.
Chairman Hallick.
Presence. Thank you. And Randy, if you'll Q O glory, let's all rise and follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen. All right. Item number three is our consent agenda. We have no notes or no minutes, no video included in this week's packets. Our city's assistant deputy clerk, deputy city clerk has suffered a very unfortunate injury, and we were not able to get back to the table tonight. Karen wish to elaborate on that at all? I know the minutes will be in the next month's packet, as will the video, and we will review and seek approval at that time, I believe.
Yes, as soon as they're completed, they will be in your packet for your approval.
Thank you so very much, Karen, and well wishes to you on a quick and comfortable healing. Item number four, public comments. At this time, anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public comment, the public may comment, excuse me, on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time of the matter is being considered by the commission. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. Are there any public comments at this time? I am seeing no hands raised virtually video wise, and so we will move on. And item number five, reports. We have a memo regarding the building activity for the previous month, and then some same Due to the same conditions, the building activity report has not made it into the packet this month. Again, that item will be reviewed again for approval next month. And now, item number six, new business. We have an applicant for a conditional use permit, a use permit, rather. The applicant's name is R. Damian and Alexis Lauderdale. Mr. and Mrs. Lauderdale, would you or representative thereof like to present your application?
Chair, Chair Hallick, if I might. My recollection is that a couple of members of the planning commission needed to step down on this item last time and just wanted to give those folks an opportunity. They maybe are, they maybe already did and aren't, aren't on here. I apologize if that's the case, but just a reminder.
Yes, thank you, City Attorney Lorca. I see that Mr. Commissioner Krieger has bowed out, as has Commissioner Berger, and due to proximity reasons, those are the only two, they're not here via video. So I think we are okay to proceed. So I'm back to you, Mr. and Mrs. Lauderdale, if you'd like to present your application.
So I, I believe that our attorney is presenting first.
And your attorney is?
Christine Kemp.
Yes, Ms. Kemp, please proceed.
I have a PowerPoint that I believe Randy is going to share with you. We have tried to make this very straightforward and not take much of your time here, but it was a bit confusing. I watched your last planning commission meeting, and there were lots of issues and questions raised, particularly about the setbacks. So we wanted to try to package this for you in the most straightforward manner we could. Next slide, please. The Lauderdales have been listening to what your committee has been saying, and they did file the application for the use permit and paid those fees. They have met with their neighbors, and they've revised their second story plan so that everything on their second story is within their setbacks, and they filed the use permit to address the areas of the building that were pre-existing and that are not within the setbacks, but they're legal non-conforming, as Mr. Lorca pointed out to you at the last meeting. Next slide, please. This is probably one of the most important slides, although the quality of it is not great. It's important for you to know that the shaded area in the middle is the second story addition. The red lines around the outside are the rear setbacks and the three side setbacks that we'll explain to you in just a moment, but I wanted you to point, to notice that the new addition is entirely within the setbacks, and the use permit addresses the little areas that are outside the setback. But all of this conforms to the city's past practice and pattern of approving very similar additions, including for Ms. Solchan and Mr. Shu. Next slide, please. We looked at how the city had, had calculated the setbacks, and ironically, this is consistent with the way the setbacks were also calculated for Mary Solson's property, and it's consistent with what your planning commissioner chair talked about last time. You take the side, you take the depth of the yard for the 20% of that is your setback, and on this property, we took the, the two depths, which are 80 and 55, added them up, divided them by two, times them times 20, and we come up with a 13.5 rear setback. And Randy, can you pop back to the last slide for a moment? So the, on the left of your screen there, you'll see our 13.5 setback. So that's where we've applied it, and I'll show you in a further slide that Mary Solson's property is just to the left of this, and she has a 13.67 setback, calculated the same way. Next slide, please. And then for our side setbacks, we were very generous. We took the east and west for the width of the lot, and again, added that up, divided it by half, and times it by 10%, because for side setbacks, you, you take 10% of the property width. That came back with a 9.8 foot side setback, and for the one area where the second story wasn't crouching, we've, they've pushed it back to 10 feet setback. So we have no encroachments on the second story. Next slide, please. Again, these are the setbacks we've applied to the property, and they are the most generous setbacks for the neighbors to give them the greatest protection. Next slide, please. And we have moved the front corner, it was the northwest corner, back two feet so that it's within that setback. Next slide, please. And the home elevations remain pretty much the same. Next setback, please. This is really important, that the city has a pattern and practice of approving properties exactly like the Lauderdales, and there is no, including Solson and Shu, there's no detriment to the health, safety, or welfare of the neighborhood, and she has, we have numerous letters of support for the project. Next project, please. Next slide. This is a very illustrative, excuse me, this is a very illustrative slide, because this is for the Solson property, and it's a little hard to read, but where the circle is on the right-hand corner there, it says she has a rear setback, and this is the same setback line to the right would be the Lauderdale's property. She has almost identical same-sized lot, and her setback, where it circled there, her rear setback is at 13.67, our rear setback is 13.5. And this was for an addition that she did to her property. Next slide, please. And again, she has encroachments into a 7.4 yard setback as well, but we're showing you these to show that this is the common practice for the city of Delray Oaks and how they establish setback lines and the prior approvals that they've given. So the Lauderdale's property is completely consistent with this. Next slide, please. And in the rear, along Plumas Avenue, the Solson property is as close as three feet. So any discussion of setbacks with the Lauderdales, it is clearly within the, the city's past practice and pattern of approving encroachments in the side yards. Next, please. And again, Solson property is very close to the property line on Plumas. Next slide, please. Also, just wanted to point out that, that our property may look a little closer to Solson's because we have an issue with the property line and where her fence is, which we'll address at some later date, but that, that bit of an encroachment onto the Lauderdale property from Solson. Next slide, please. Again, very illustrative for your commission is the Shu property, which is directly across the street. This is an aerial photograph. If you go down Bray Avenue, which is the cul-de-sac, at the end of the cul-de-sac, you have Trener. On the left, you have the Lauderdales, and on the right, you have the Shus. They have an almost identical orientation on the cul-de-sac, and as you can notice, Mr. Shu has a second story addition just over the north side of his property, exactly where the Lauderdales want to have their second story addition. Next slide, please. Shu has a six-foot side yard setback, but appears to be even closer. When Shu requested his second story, he noted that it would not be harmful to the safety and health of the neighborhood, and he also said that he needed the second story for his growing family, which is exactly where the Lauderdales are. Next slide, please. This is the Shu addition, second story, full-on second story, and very close to the property to his south, way closer than the Lauderdale's property will be on any corners. Next slide, please. This is showing the Shu property, and on that corner that we just showed you in the photograph, he used to have a six-foot setback, and that looked a lot closer than, than six feet in that photograph. At any rate, very close to the property lines, clearly much closer than any part of the Lauderdale's property is going to be. Next slide, please. Another very interesting paper that was in the file for Shu are his letter, where above in the yellow there, he said he wants two bedrooms and a bath, do not adequate living space for his growing family, and that he cannot see how building up is going to be unhealthier and safe to anyone. So again, the neighbor directly across the street who's opposing the project has asked for all the same considerations that the Lauderdales are asking for. They're not asking for special treatment, they're not asking for anything that's not been previously approved by the city, so it is very consistent with your pattern and practice. Next slide, please. And again, Mr. Shu pointed out, these are regular-shaped lots, are difficult to plan without requiring variances, and, and, you know, not being able to strictly meet all the setbacks. And again, the Lauderdales are meeting all the setbacks with their second story. They can't undo what was on the first story, but they did apply for the use permit to legally address that issue at the recommendation of your planning commission. Next slide, please. And this is the Shu's second story addition, again, very similar. They have a study and a master suite up on their second floor. Next slide, please. These are other, two other projects that are currently under construction, and you can just see the close proximity to the fences. And again, the Lauderdale's project is nowhere near as close as, as these recently approved projects, which didn't have variances or use permits, I believe, but at any rate, even if they did, they're under construction, and they are consistent with the city's pattern and practice of approving projects that, that are within setbacks. But again, the Lauderdale's second story is not within the setbacks. So next slide, please. So in conclusion, we ask that you approve this permit. This is the third or fourth time that they've been before you. They've done everything that your planning commission has requested. The application is completely consistent with other applications that the city has processed and the setbacks that the city has established. And basically, the finding that you need to make is that the project not, will not under the circumstances of the particular case be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, and comfort of the neighborhood, or to the public welfare in general. So we're hoping that you will make that finding and allow the Lauderdales to finally get on and move forward with their project, which is again, consistent with the city's past pattern and practice. Next slide, please. I would like to be able to reserve some time to respond to any questions or comments that are made either by the planning commissioners or the, the public, and I believe Alexis is going to make a slight, a short presentation as well. So we appreciate your time and your consideration of this project, and we ask that you allow them to move forward with their permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a very comprehensive presentation, Ms. Kemp. And now, Mr. or Mrs. Lauderdale, would you like to speak to the application?
Yes. Randy, can you put up my PowerPoint slide as well, please? All right. So as Ms. Kemp stated, this is our third, our fourth time coming back. So I also put together some slides to discuss the steps that we've taken by the request of the planning commission. So next slide, please. So Alexis, I'm asking you to approve my addition based on consistent historical approvals of addition in surrounding areas of the neighborhood, and that the neighbors that are contesting the addition, my, their setbacks were smaller than the ones that I am requesting, so I'm asking for that same courtesy. I have met with neighbors, I have gathered approval letters, I had my lot surveyed by LACIO survey, I changed my plans to accommodate setbacks, and I applied and paid for the use permit. So those were the steps asked of me. Next slide, please. This is the use permit showing that this is what I applied, and the one that was turned into the city has the signature. So next slide, please. So I met with the Ellsworth stated, we discussed moving windows for them in their original meeting, and unfortunately, that did not meet their requirements. They told us regardless of what accommodations we were willing to make for their privacy, that they refused to give us approval moving forward, regardless of the size of the addition, they just did not want a second story regardless. The second neighbors we met with in that same meeting were the Solsons. Again, we went, we tried to move windows, we tried to accommodate privacy. What we were told is that regardless of what we did, that she was going to get a lawyer involved, and that she would see us in court, and that she did not want a second story. At that time, she handed me a piece of paper and told me to redo my full addition to a single story, and that would be the only time that she would not fight my addition. So that was not a successful meeting and compromise. Next slide, please. I did not attempt to meet with the Shus. There are some unresolved aggressive behaviors that were happening, and I talked to the city manager when that request was made by the commission, and I described to him what was happening and the calls to the police. And so I did not feel safe to meet with the Shus, so I did not meet with them. I will state that, that is very much true. I did meet with the Treners. We discussed privacy, we came up with a conclusion and an agreement and a compromise that when the addition was done, they could come up and look through the window, and if they felt that their privacy needs were not met, we would plant trees in that corner, and they signed a letter of agreeing that this would meet their accommodation needs. Next slide, please. I spoke with neighbors at 3, 10, 4, and 21 Quindale, which are the majority of the neighbors. So there are eight of us on this cul-de-sac, six of us, including myself, all approved this addition, and we're excited that we were doing it. And those letters are actually in your packet for review if you want further information on them. Lynn, Rachel Lynn, unfortunately, on both of her letters submitted to the city, there was no address or contact information, so I was not able to figure out who Rachel Lynn was and where her property is to meet with her. So I could not meet with her based on information not provided. And other compromise offered, we offered and told the planning commission that we would, you know, accommodate and meet if we needed to put trees up if the neighbors wanted us to. We agreed, as you can see, we did with the Treners, and we also talked about our sheds if that was a need, but we would like to keep them at least until the addition is done. Next slide, please. Like I said, you have those supporting letters, there's over nine of them, and like I said, there's four of them with support just on this cul-de-sac, but we also got supporting letters from neighbors behind us on Plumas, as well as other close residential Dairy Oaks neighbors that are in your packet. Next slide, please. And there was a question raised last time about the little piece of addition that we're doing on the bottom floor. I don't believe it's 60, or there was addition, sorry, raised about the house, the pass rear addition, and so that was done in 1964, and I, if you can go to the next slide, I submitted those documentation showing that there was a permit granted for that original addition. Unfortunately, if you can read on there, it's probably really small, but the plans to that were not there, somehow they were lost, and those plans were not retrievable, but the permit is. Next slide, please. There was a question raised about the small area on the bottom floor that would be added on to. With that being said, I believe it's even smaller than 60 feet, but that smaller area will not extend beyond any current point of the lower addition, and I, it's just filling in a gap, and if you go to the next slide, we took a picture of that. It's just filling in this little gap here, which is between two pieces of the house that's already existing. Next slide, please. So my husband and I were third generation residents of Monterey Peninsula. We want to live in Dairy Oaks, we want our family to grow here. We've done what was asked of us. We tried to accommodate neighbors and come up with compromise. Unfortunately, that didn't work, and we are asking for an approval for our remodel and to follow common practice of Dairy Oaks past history and approvals as shown in Mrs. Kemp's PowerPoint. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lauderdale. Mr. Lauderdale, you're mentioned on the, you're named on the application also. Anything to add before I go out to public comments? Mr. Lauderdale?
Good. Yep.
Thank you, sir. Right, so at this time, I'd like to go out to public comments. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, you'll be afforded three minutes to do so. I would just, allow me to say that, as has been mentioned, as we're all aware, this item has been revisited several times. Many of your comments, letters, arguments for or against the project have all been received in writing and are matter of public record at this time, and been with respect duly noted and considered in the determination of this, of this project. And so now, we will go out to public comments, and the same guidelines apply, that there will be a timeline of, a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up at this time, and all comments will be referred to staff. So any members of the public, if you please. Mr. Shu, please.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I don't want to bring up any of my concerns from the last letters, you already know what they are. My main concern is still the size of the project, 1,090 square feet. Now I want to set the record straight. In her letter, she states that I've built almost an identical second story with three bedrooms. Since she went through my records at City Hall, she should have seen I have one bedroom, one bathroom, and an office upstairs of a total of 534 square feet, which is half of what they want to put up there. You know, if she's going to put this stuff in her application, she should at least get her facts straight. Also, at no time have I ever said I was against a second story. My main objection to the addition is its size, from which I heard some of the commissioners are also saying at the last meeting. Also in her statement, Mr. Shu has been aggressive. That is something that happened two years ago, and we have not spoken one word since. So, you know, she needs to talk to people. And at the last meeting, there were three things you asked her, to get a use permit, reduce the size, and talk to neighbors. The only thing she's done is got a use permit. All those letters she sent you from the neighbors were from two months ago. And, yeah, because all she did was apply for the permit. I think if she reduces size, the neighbors will probably go along with it. All she has to do is talk with them and have a little bit of open mind. I think if you, if this project should not be considered until she does what the commissioners asked. If you approve this project as submitted, you will be setting a bad precedent for the city of Delray Oaks for years to come. And also in this, and they, they keep attacking my house on the setbacks. I have never said anything about their setbacks, and the one that they show on the side of my garage, that was existing when I bought the house. That had nothing to do with the second story up. That's clear on the other side of the house. So that's about all I want to say, and thank you for listening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shu. Any other public comments?
Yeah, Ben Ellsworth.
Mr. Ellsworth, please go right ahead.
I'm here to express our concern with the application CUQ number 21-05 to be exempt from CEQA guidelines 15301, 15303, and 15304. The application is not clear on which subsects they're, subsections they are trying to be exempt from. We do not want 11 Bray being converted into an office building as CEQA 15301.n states we're having a daycare run out of the home as stated in exemption CEQA 15303.p. It was stated in the last meeting, the plan was to add square footage to the bottom floor, but is still not updated on the application. It is still not clear on what is being built, and if there were any changes being made since the last meeting. There are just two examples of the project not being truth, true and forth-telling. During the meeting in April, all but one commissioner had concerns with total size of the addition, since it didn't match the aesthetics of Delray Oaks and suggested downsizing and talking to their neighbors at about acceptable size. I reached out via text to Ms. Lauderdale on another matter and was blocked, showing that she had no desire to communicate about anything. It also, excuse me, it also should show that she has no interest in doing what the planning commission recommended. We want to reiterate that we respect our neighbors of Delray Oaks and want everyone to improve their property, as long as it is done legally and respectfully. The planning commission has heard the rest of our concern in past meetings, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Any members of the public care to comment?
Rachel Lynn, I agree with Mr. Ellsworth. Once again, the Lauderdales have not reached out and met with their neighbors. Ms. Lauderdale, my email is available in any of the packets. Feel free to reach out to me via email. I am also concerned about the conditional use permit. I think there's a couple of different options that Delray Oaks and the Lauderdales have. Delray Oaks can approve the permit, which will set the precedent that every property in Delray Oaks that is non-conforming will be allowed to build to the maximum allowable square footage, which Mr. Shu's property is not built to the maximum allowable square footage. According to Commissioner Burton, there are hundreds of such structures, so then all of a sudden, Delray Oaks could become a city of exceptionally large houses on exceptionally large lots. Option number two, the Lauderdales could remove the non-conforming area of their house and then build the addition on the remaining structure. Option number three, the city could allow the Lauderdales to build an addition on the, only on the conforming area of their house, which would be the part without the addition. Or option number one doesn't seem like a great choice, because it'll set a bad precedent for future permit requests, which we're already arguing about. Over the past three months, the Lauderdales have shown no interest in complying with the board's repeated request to make the proposed addition smaller. It's still the same size, less two square feet, and for that reason, I don't think option two or option three are viable. And that clearly only leaves one choice, which is option number four. The, I suggest that the board denies the conditional use permit for the property at 11 Bray Place. I fully support the board in its denial of the permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Public comments still open, still receiving public comments?
Mr. Chair, my hand is up. This is Frederica Jones.
Ms. Jones, please.
Good evening, commission. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm in agreement with those that have already spoken about the size on the upper store, story level, the second floor, that it has been a repeated request by the immediate neighbors of the Lauderdale as far as the floor plan for that second story remodel. One of the secret requirements is that the upper second One of the sequel requirements is that the upper second floor be no larger than fifty percent of the lower floor. This was addressed on prior sessions that we've had. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Shu. When you look at his building, it's five hundred square foot versus Lauderdale's nearly eleven hundred square foot request. The letters that have been submitted by the Lauderdale, the one on Quindale is at the end of the street. And only the three neighbors on Bray are the ones that have approved or given support of the approval. So, but the main course is that the direct effect is on Ms. Solcang and the Ellsworth family. And I think that those should be the ones that have, and family. And I'm asking the commission to continue requesting either they be in compliance as, as previously has been stated or we continue to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So, any other public comments?
Yes, commissioners, Dutch Meyer for Mary Solcang. This use-
Meyer, please, go ahead.
This use is detrimental to the comfort, convenience and welfare of persons residing in the neighborhood pursuant to Delray Oaks Code seventeen point zero four point zero eight zero. The page three of the planning guidelines show setbacks on rear yard from roof line. And the rear setback of thirteen and a half feet is encroached on by only five feet from the roof line or seven feet from the property footprint. We are requesting a uniform application of the setback codes in the public interest and protection of adjacent properties. We believe that this overdevelopment of this lot, which has occurred and which is being proposed to occur is injurious to the property in the neighborhood. The multi-story intensification of the non-conforming structure should be denied. The applicant did not choose to cite the structure where it stands, but they are nevertheless bound by the choices made by the builders who built the original and the addition. The two-story building lacks harmony with the other structures in the area. The disharmony is exacerbated by the encroachment on the setbacks. Our calculation of the twenty-foot front yard setback shows the northeast corner of the property already encroaching on the front yard setback rather than three side yards. This should not be sequoia exempt as the addition is greater than fifty percent of the existing floor area. Hillwell has no two-story buildings. Bray has only one two-story building. And we appreciate you taking the time to hear our position. Thank you, commissioners.
And thank you, sir. Still inviting public comments. I am-
Hello. My name is Mary Solcang.
Yes, Ms. Solcang, please.
I addressed a number of inaccuracies in the material that was attached to the use permit application in a letter delivered to the city on May tenth. So I would ask you to review that letter. I believe all of the commissioners have it. I also want to comment that I met with the Lauderdale's after the March Planning Commission meeting. It was a contentious meeting. And we've not met since, even though last month you asked them to meet with the neighbors again. My comments in the March meeting regarding a ground floor addition were intended to pose a solution that I felt would result in no further opposition. Before this project was ever began, I expressed the opinion that I think privacy is important and I asked the Lauderdale's to not put any windows facing my property into their second floor addition. Instead, they put two windows in. In the March meeting, the Lauderdale's offer of a compromise was to reduce the number of windows from two to one. The larger window being, and the more, and the one in the activity room being the remaining window. That was not and is not acceptable to me. It, it takes away one hundred percent of the privacy of my backyard. Had I had an opportunity to meet with the Lauderdale's again at their request, I think it was appropriate for me to approach them. I would have suggested that if the activity room were eliminated or moved to the first floor, even as an additional area on the first floor, it would obviate the need for windows facing my property. That is my issue. My privacy is my issue. There is not a place in my backyard that will not be visible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solcang. Any further, any further public comments? Please raise your hand, either electronically or visually on screen.
Karen Malik, Susan Blush has her hand up.
Yes, thank you. Before I start, I just want to make sure that it's okay that I make a comment because I am the wife of one of the commissioners. But my comment that I want to make is a general comment with respect to the precedent that this type of construction can set. I used to live in a suburb of Newport Beach called Corona del Mar. That was forty and forties and fifties houses that were constructed with front yards. There were no sidewalks. There were very few streetlights. It was a very similar community to Delray Oaks. Today, because people were allowed to build to the limits of their lots, when you walk through Corona del Mar now, there are virtually no front yards because people have built their houses all the way up to the front property line with a small setback of maybe ten feet and as far over on all the property lines as they can. So when you walk through the community now, all you see are gigantic houses. And I think that part of the problem that the Lauderdale's are experiencing is that they have a uniquely shaped lot that has very little frontage. So putting the size house on there that they're contemplating actually will appear even larger than it is, which is still a large amount to increase, but it'll appear even larger than it is because of the configuration of the lot. And I think in the long run, it would be detrimental to the entire community of Delray Oaks if we set a precedent allowing people to double the size of the houses that are on the lots. And that's all I have to say.
You're muted, Jeremy. Sorry for the technical difficulty on my part. Still accepting public comments. Please raise your hand via video. I'm searching electronically on our participant list. Randy, are you seeing any further public comments?
I'm not seeing any.
Pardon?
I'm not seeing any.
All right, seeing none. Public comment session is now closed. Now I'll go out to my fellow planning commissioners. So fellow planning commissioners, we have a determination to make here this evening. There's obviously, there has been, and I say that past tense, much to consider. We've heard a lot of very pertinent arguments from both opposers and supporters of the project. We have heard questioning SEQA guidelines, the legality of the project, building requirements, building precedents set relative to the, the rest of the city. We've heard a lot. However, at this point, I, I would suggest, if not insist, that we narrow our scope of vision and we focus purely on the item at hand. Tonight's application is for a use permit. City manager has been kind enough to include in our packet as is stated in our ordinances, our municipal code ordinances. And he has highlighted chapters one-seven-point-zero-four-point-zero-eight-zero, particularly subsection B. And I'll read from that now. "The findings of the planning commission, except as otherwise provided in this section, need include only that the establishment, maintenance and/or conducting of the use for which the use permit is sought will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such use and will not, under any circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood." So we will go through a brief discussion by the planning commission. I will begin. As per the aforementioned criteria for our ordinances, I find no substantive detrimental or negatively impacting considerations concerning this project. And I do believe and therefore recommend that, that approval is warranted. Vice Chairman Hayworth.
I first wanted to say that, you know, the motion that we made last, in our last meeting, it, it is not really reflected in what we have here. Our last meeting, the chairman modified Mr. Jack Shaw's motion to exclude any compromise by the applicants. But it was added back in, but in any of the written stuff that I've seen, there's no mention of that. It goes straight to use permit. I, I, I feel that, I feel this project is too big. And, you know, staying on task, I think that, I think it is detrimental to the, to the neighborhood. As far as setbacks and whatever, and, you know, what's gone on before, the rules that are established now are the rules that, as they are now. You know, a lot of things happened way back in the sixties and whatever that have changed. So the rules are as they are now. I don't feel there's been an appreciable attempt to compromise with this project. I don't remember ever having a project come to the planning commission that's had this much rancor before. So I, I feel it's too big for the lot and I think it's injurious to the neighbors and I would, I would have to deny it.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Hayworth. Commissioner Woods, please.
Hello, thank you. I do have a question that I wasn't able to ask at the last meeting and that was regarding, there's an eyebrow in the front of the house. And if you look in at the side elevations, it almost looks like that whole roof line goes straight to the front of the house. And I just don't quite understand that. So I don't know if I can get some clarification, this is the time. Because it looks like, it, it almost looks like it's an extra area and I'm not quite sure on that.
Would you like us to explain that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'm going to put on my architect, one second, okay?
Okay, because I think this, this is a square footage issue, I think, but maybe not. Hi.
Hi, Alan Turpin here. That roof line is, comes down from the activity room. Correct. Rather than create any more bulk or mass, it just comes down and meets the, the front of the house.
Okay.
And blends in with the porch.
Okay, so it goes-
It's a blending kind of a thing that, that, that sort of goes with it. And then there's a little added interest to the eyebrow window. It acts like a clear story that throws light into the stairwell going up and throws some light into the upper floor of the, the activity room. And that's what that's all about.
Okay, so the roof, so it goes from, I'm sorry. So if you're looking at the, the footprint of the second story, it goes from the, the wall of the activity room and then that roof line goes all the way to the front of the house, correct?
It goes down.
Uh huh. And so that's just going to be empty space?
It's just volume inside of the living room.
Oh, oh, so it's open to downstairs?
It's all open.
Oh, okay.
It's like a mezzanine looking up into the, to the, uh, the activity room.
Ah, so it's, okay. Yeah, this is a, this is a really hard project because I, I really like the fact that you're doing something different. And it is, it is a really, it's a large addition. Your house is set down a little bit off the street, which makes it not quite so cumbersome. It's really sad, actually, that there's, there's all this, the, the back and forth and, and
You'll notice also-
And, and that, but anyway, that's, that's not here, that they're, sorry, that's not my-
The architect used the building requirements on the guidelines for size based on what Dairy Oaks, what, you know, we could do.
Right.
So that's where the size came from and we did it to make it to where it would be aesthetically appealing to where the house sits and for lighting for everyone.
And you'll notice that all three sides of the house, there's a relief where the roof goes up to the second story. It's not a straight wall up the second story. The only part that does that is on one side, which would be the east side. And that, we have an enormous setback on that side of the house, which I think mitigates really the, the bulk of that upper floor.
Yes, and I think-
All the way around the house.
Okay.
Upper floor is setback from the lower floor.
Yes, thank, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Turpin, on the architectural aspects. And Commissioner Wood, I'm just going to, I'm just going to touch on this again. The, the element of the ordinance that we are, that, with the criteria that we're really focusing on right now, those key elements were, were a bit beyond architecture, either here or there, but-
Well, it was just, okay, sorry.
Go ahead, Mrs. Wood.
No, 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 I'm saying I was, I, I thought it was a square footage issue and that's why I brought it up, so. Sorry about that.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs.-
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood.
I'm done.
Um, and now to Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Good evening, everybody. I'm frantically writing notes as usual and nothing is very organized. We're planning commission and architectural review. And I think the applicants have fulfilled their obligation as far as requirements. But as far as architectural review, I, it sort of falls within the neighbors. It's a detriment to the neighbors. It's architecturally too big. They haven't made any compromise as far as scaling it down. And they have a family room and an activity room. Sort of the same thing, I guess, but it is too big for the neighbors and therefore it fails to pass the, that fulfillment. So I, I, at this time, I can't approve. Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw. And we will go to Commissioner Burton.
Okay, sorry about not having a picture there to go with this. Nice job, Jeremy. I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you for focusing us and getting us on the right issue that we have for the community. And beyond that, yep, this, this project is not acceptable for nineteen sixties. Hundred percent, I'm with you. Two thousand and twenty, hundred percent, this project is exactly what Delray Oaks should be approving without even thinking about it. I mean, this, this family who loves Delray Oaks wants to have a great neighborhood. They want to improve their property. They want to live here, be a part of the community. And this is exactly the type of family that we should be trying to pull, not, not push, not push away from Delray Oaks. They've met everything that we've asked them to do. This conditional use permit, yes, from the set- yes, from the setbacks from 19 whatever to whatever, the new ones that put every, virtually every house in violation in Delray Oaks. The setbacks and these other things, they're not getting any bigger than their setbacks. They've talked to their neighbors. Some have been very, very non, well, I should say confrontational with them. So some of the neighbors have just said, "I'm not talking to you and I will never..." When I hear the word "never," that is a person that will not talk about what's going on. I will never approve anything other than a single-story thing. That, to me, is, it's quite frankly, not neighborly. You should be able to talk. You should be able to work it out. I think that this family has done everything that we've asked them to do. And this is what we want for Delray Oaks. I'm talking from a community here. We want people, if every house, and I'll, and I'll comment on every house being a monster house. If we end up with every house being a monster house in Delray Oaks, that's what we need. Because families need that. If, if. I'm not saying that every house would be. I wholeheartedly and strongly encourage our planning Commissioners to reconsider, those that have said, "I don't like it. It doesn't fit in with something else." I respect your opinions. But I would ask you to think, break out of the chains, and let's go to the future of Delray Oaks. Not some 1960s model of what the houses look like up here. No, let's make them bigger. Let's build them up. Let's, if it's a precedent, well, by golly, it's already been said in Delray Oaks. Prior planning commission, groups of planning commission have already approved second-story additions as big as or bigger than this one. I say yes, and if I'm last, Jeremy, I make a motion that we accept this conditional use permit as written, and we stamp it yes and go with it right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Just before we second, is there any further discussion on the motion from the Planning Commission? In that case, I will second the motion to approve. Karen, would you please do roll call?
Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Commissioner Burton.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger. Commissioner Jack Shaw.
No.
Commissioner Hayworth.
No.
Chairman Halleck.
Yes. Would you like to report out on the tally or shall I? Karen?
Oh, I'm sorry. The motion passes three to two.
Thank you very much, Karen. And so let me state for the record that conditional use permit number 21-05, the location at 11 Bray Place, Assessor's parcel number is hereby approved by majority.
Chair Halleck, may I intervene for a second? The agenda lists the three SEQA guideline exemptions. The staff report only has two. For clarification, I would understand that the Planning Commission would include, in addition to 15301 and 15304, that the project is also exempt from SEQA pursuit to 15303. It didn't make it onto the staff report, but I think that was the staff recommendation.
Yes, and thank you Attorney Lorca for your very thorough and comprehensive work on the legal aspects of this project and the exemption by way of being a single-family home that is a bit further along in that particular SEQA guideline, if I'm not mistaken.
My pleasure.
The future. And so once again, the aforementioned details for this application is approved with no conditions imposed. So Mr. and Mrs. Lauderdale, you are hereby approved by the Planning Commission. You, of course, have permission to proceed. You may go through the permitting process with our City Hall offices. However, be aware that there is a 20-day appeals period. So it's at your own behest to start, but there is a 20-day appeal process from any member of the public before the project is absolutely finalized. If not, you're good to proceed.
Thank you for your time and I understand. We will proceed with the following rules. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Best wishes to you and your happy family and improving the community of Delray Oaks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And so, thank you, everyone. Good job. Thanks for your patience and perseverance over a three-meeting adventure. We are now at a closing on that item, and that brings us to item number seven. Announcements and comments by planning Commissioners. Vice Chairman Hayworth.
I have nothing to say.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Um, one, even though I did oppose the project, I congratulate them that it did get passed. Get the project upward and onward. I hope there's no ill will. But in any event, I just thought it was a little bit on the big side. And another note is that the Delray Oaks Citywide Garage Sale at the last Saturday of July, looks like at this moment, it will be a go. But we still have to get final approval by the county. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw. Commissioner Woods?
Halleck.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Berger?
I need to know if that's gonna happen because I need to start baking brownies, George.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger.
I'll be over.
All right, good.
Commissioner Krieger?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
And Commissioner Burton?
Thank you all very much. This is what makes Delray Oaks a nice little community to live in. And we can, you know, this is it, guys and gals. This is, we talk to each other. We figure it out. Nice job. And not just because it went the way I think it should go. This is, we're here for the families and the safety and you know, the future of Delray Oaks. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And now we're out and off with a brief comment. You know, again, thanks to everyone. A lot of work went into this. You know, a lot of deliberation and consideration from all angles. What it came down to is consistency with our city ordinances, as I believe it always must. Any other procedure or practice is going to leave this body vulnerable for you know, judgment as to, and it will instill a lack of confidence in our public that we serve. To that point, I've heard it said, and I agree, rules are rules. We will not go back in time and change anything that's already been approved. But we don't have to go that far back. It's just as recent as last month. If we're really paying attention to these ordinances, there was an item, an application for an improvement made that I personally had to recuse myself from because of proximity reasons. But by way of the ordinance, that home on that lot had less than a 288-square-foot garage. Therefore, if we're being consistent with all of our citizens and fair and equitable treatment across the board, we need to catch each one of these. And a use permit would have been warranted in such case, too. And but bygones are bygones. We're not gonna go back in time, but moving forward, we will run a very tight ship. Not on my watch, five, 10 years from now, will they be looking back and saying, "Well, how come we can't do it?" Because they did it. We're gonna do things by the book. As for the ordinances, we have an amazing staff to advise us. They do their homework thoroughly, comprehensively. We have great legal guidance to steer us in the right direction. And we've got a great cohesive team in this, in this Planning Commission also. And I think that together, we can make it work positively for the entire community. As always, I thank you for allowing me to be of service.
Chairman Halleck, can I make an announcement?
Yes, please.
Karen. Keep in mind, Hayworth, Jack Shaw, Burton, and Krieger, if you want to reapply for your Planning Commission positions, I need your applications by Monday. I know I've gotten a couple already, so thank you. I just thought I'd put a little reminder out.
Karen, was the soft copy good enough or do you need a hard copy dropped off?
No, Gary, that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, thank you. That's it, Chairman. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Karen.
Fast question from the public for Ms. Manami. Is that okay?
The discretion of the chair is...
The discretion of the chair. I just have a question for Karen on applications for planning commissioner.
So public comment is closed at this time. We've...
Okay, I'll call the office, no problem.
That's a great avenue. Thank you, Mr. Cronin. Any other comments from the Commission? All right, well, good work, everyone. With that, we'll do item number nine. Let's adjourn.
Say goodnight, Dick.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night, all of you.
Good night.